No cheaters allowed.
misunderstood me. It's all those. You have something. Good ideas.
I didn't do mine this one.
Dale? Alright, this is our city council meeting. June eighteenth. With that, we'll begin with the roll call.
Mayor Aykort?
Here.
Councilor Penneres?
Here.
Commissioner Phillips?
Here.
Commissioner Richards?
Here.
Commissioner DeLumich?
Here.
Alright, the approval of agenda. And I have this three quick updates. Beginning with now we'll leave that one. We're eliminating the planning and zoning. Number one, we don't have a resolution, but we have a memo from Bill Carlson.
Right. So we're taking planning and zoning out? No, 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 no.
No, I'll just, we're just
Just the first
There's no resolution, just a memo. And the memo looks you have your packet that was on your table here. Uh, the next one is under Fire Department. Excuse me, first responders. We need to add the may calls. We had the mail calls for city and township. And also the number one, the number two under F. Gwen Burgundy and Caleb Kimmernan are two first responders that need to be motioned for approval.
Aren't they already on the agenda?
What's that?
I thought they were on the agenda.
They're not on the agenda for first responders.
Yeah.
Oh, we need to add the calls for May. Gwen and Caleb motion for approval. And your Parks and Trails. Number two, action approved LGR sign. That's, we're removing that. You'd have more continuation in the Parks and Trails Committee.
Senior. Two's on. So removing number two?
Removing number two, yes. Any other changes? They do not make a motion to be approved, the agenda is approved. They're amended. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 O's, that's approved. Our public forum is a three-minute time limit. City Council welcomes and encourages participation from community members. And please keep in mind that your comments must be pertinent to city business and must adhere to data privacy rules. No employees' names may be used. Please do not expect action from the council this evening regarding your concerns. To address the city council during public forum, please step up to the podium, state your name, address, and fill out the form provided. Speakers will be recognized only once. Uh, you will be timed. Again, speaking with green cards raised, yellow card indicates you have thirty seconds left, and the red card indicates you have reached a three-minute time limit and must stop. So with that, I open up for public forum.
Carl Gross, two fifteen East Center Street, Orinoco, Minnesota. Came to my attention after the last meeting on May twenty-ninth that when Mayor Aykort asked for a motion, he made a motion, he needed a second for discussion, and nobody had may second it. It was pretty childish. And I went, I talked to three council members and the mayor. And one council member told me he thought if he seconded it, he was in favor of passing it. And that wasn't the case, and I explained it to him, and then he understood it. The second council member told me apparently it wasn't worth discussing. It's hard to believe that it wasn't discussed before the meeting, but and the third guy, councilman I talked to, I can't repeat the words right now. And the mayor had no comment. And it's, it's hard to believe that this ain't going on behind closed doors. I was on the city council, unfortunately, I hate to say it, I was involved with closed doors meeting, but at least we discussed at the table. And it sometimes they got exchanged, but it's got, we gotta discuss, we can't not discuss problem. Because it's getting way out of hand. Because, I mean, and then back here a couple of months ago, attorney advised them not to go into a closed meeting. I asked one of the council people why, he said he's only recommend we can do whatever we want. Well, if that's the case, if we can do whatever we want, then we might as well not have an attorney. That's my feeling, and uh you know, I think my feeling is, I mean, some of the words out on the street is the zoning board's getting, you know, we got two council members sitting on the zoning board, and his wife sits on the zoning board. You know, if they, they decide it's a good deal or a bad deal, one other person, and you know, it sure comes to the council, but two two council people are on there, something, okay, I better quit.
You've got thirty seconds, though.
Okay, well, that's my opinion, thank you.
Thank you, Carl. Thank you.
Second call for public forum?
Annie Johnson, four seventy-five River Park Road. So I'm gonna use Carl's comment and just kind of build upon what Carl was talking about here. So last week, the city of Orinoco has once again found itself at the center of a news story. And again, not for flattering reasons. So as we heard just a little preview of, allegations have come forth from a former city council member that this current city council has been holding secret meetings outside of city council meeting times. It is alleged that these meetings, which do not include the mayor, I want to be very clear about that, have been held for the express reason as to review the upcoming agenda and decide ahead of time how the council, again minus the mayor, will move to vote on agenda items. It was also during one of these meetings that the plan to fire our former city administrator Sunny was developed. These are allegations, but for anyone who was at or watched the meeting where Sunny was fired, it is clear that this was a premeditated move. The council member who has since come forth can be seen in that meeting being coached by another city council member on the timing of bringing the motion to fire Sunny. We all can see that. Other actions by this council, as recently as last month, also support the allegations that have been brought forth. As Carl just mentioned, during this meeting, you can watch the mayor bring forth several motions for discussion where the rest of the council members fall completely silent, refusing to even discuss agenda items. And one of the motions was to discuss placement of mental health signs in our city parks for people to know who to reach out to if help is needed. The council stayed silent. To the community members who are present and may be listening today, I cannot stress enough how important all of this is to be aware of. This behavior by the council minus the mayor is flagrantly out of bounds and is illegal. And is not without consequence. Their legal activities have real-life impacts on everyone in this community. Sunny lost her job, she lost her wages, she lost her benefits. And we lost her very capable leadership during a time that was most consequential in our city. Anything any of us care about here tonight or any night going forward is being presented to a council with complete disregard for the law. And funny enough, you bring up paying our lawyer and having a problem with it. To the members of the council who are being used as pawns in this illegal behavior, please stop. You know these illegal meetings are not right. And you know all of this is not without consequence for our city and for you individually. Serving our council is a serious role. As is evident, your decisions have significant and wide-reaching impacts. Our community does so much better than this.
Third and final call? Sign that, I close public forum at six forty-one. For time is Public Works. Your packet is a memo from Joe Palin along with everybody receive the quotes. Your panel. Girl, do you want to speak to that?
Yeah, the quote is really summarized in the letter. We solicited quotes to the contractor doing all of the paving work for some paving at the intersection of Seventh Street North West and Lake Shady Avenue. That is a place where there's a bituminous patch removal and replace patch and then some overlay at that intersection that needs to be done. It's in close proximity to the first-place work that the contractor needs to put the wear course on. So we asked them for a quote to do that work, and we did get that work from Rochester Sand and Gravel, fourteen thousand, thirty-four dollars and twenty-five cents. Kind of looking at that quote, we were hoping for a little better number, so I did go ahead and solicit other contractors to provide a quote. So I did get three additional quotes as I talked about in the memo last Friday. All of them are higher than Rochester Sand and Gravel's quote. And so since they are the low quote, and since they're doing all of the other work in town, if you want to do these improvements, I recommend that you go ahead and award that work to them and I'll notify them and see to it that it gets them.
Okay.
So this is kind of discounted price because it's, because they're doing the other work.
Well, that's what I was hoping for. It's not as discounted as maybe I was hoping, and that's why I solicited some additional quotes, and none of them were better.
You know those figures by chance, Joe?
Um, I do. I sent them in my email to Kane. So Rochester Sand and Gravel was at fourteen thousand, thirty-four dollars. Durst Outdoor Services was at fourteen thousand, fifty-eight dollars. So just a little bit higher. Azlixen was at fifteen thousand, seven hundred and three dollars and eighty cents. And Elcor Construction was at nineteen thousand, seven hundred and forty-four dollars. I can give you this, Joe.
Okay.
So the city hat staff has all the quotes and the email and summary of information, I just didn't didn't have one packet with them.
So I make a motion, we approve Rochester Sand and Gravel for twenty twenty-four street repair for fourteen thousand, thirty-four dollars and twenty-five cents.
Any second then.
So in addition to that, there's a little discussion about some parking on Minnesota Avenue south of the bridge. I don't know if the council wants to go into any discussion about that, but I did make a few recommendations after we did look at that that day. There's some demand for additional on-street parking. The roadway corridor has sufficient width to accommodate that. And so we would recommend that there wouldn't be parking from the bridge the first street, second street, where the event center is located. But between second street and third street, we would allow
South of the bridge.
South of the
South of, south of the road going to the event.
South of the road, yep. So basically from there towards the top of the hill, we would allow parking on both sides. Unfortunately, the, the only downfall there is we don't have sidewalk. But we don't have sidewalk anywhere, but again, there is parking facilities there. And there is some demand, and so if you want to allow parking, that would, that would
How many cars is that going to accommodate?
There is quite
Being up each side.
Probably, it's not sunny, there was a wedding there, and they were parked on both sides.
It's pretty tight, so.
It's tight, but it forces you to slow down, that's for sure.
Absolutely.
Probably a dozen or more cars on both sides, yeah.
Are they going to do anything with the drain field and put extra parking up over there, do you know?
Uh, I don't know, the drain field's gone.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
They are on Grinder Station. There is some you know, there's a pretty good right-of-way width there, and so if they would want to you know, either petition the city or something like that, there's a potential that parking could be added within the right-of-way. They haven't done so to my knowledge, but it seems like that might be possible.
That'd be just a way to take care of that for the extra cars that are
Well, it'd accommodate some, right? Yeah. Yeah.
Couple weeks ago, they had a big tent in that area.
Oh.
I think that's planned if it was that weekend.
I know I had talked to Jess about that, and she mentioned that maybe because people are coming up over the hill and all the cars are there. So she mentioned maybe they could put a sign there before they come up over that hill coming north.
At the end of a head
Yeah.
Just a utility orange sign is what I
A caution.
So that they know when they come up over the hill, there's going to be cars parked on both sides.
Could it be like a sandwich sign or a sandwich port that there is that they can put it up that way? So I mean, it would be something that'd catch their eye.
Yeah.
If it's there all the time, people are going to ignore it, you know, until, you know. Something that they, if it's something that they have at the event center, maybe it'd be like event caution, event marking, whatever.
Okay, um, we have a motion on the table, any more discussion about the street repair?
No.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
O's? Approved? One item for water and sewer. And if you want to turn back to your consent agenda, and look for the June tenth water and sewer meetings. On page three. Some background over updated sewer water rates based on local ERUs, so.
So just a real little bit of background for the council. ERU, equivalent residential unit, essentially a single-family house. And so we calculate sewer rates based on water usage. So one ERU is five thousand gallons, okay? A month, and so if you use ten thousand gallons and you're a commercial property or a non-residential property, you'd be considered two ERUs, right? Because it's twice five thousand. Or if you are a multifamily dwelling, so for example, you are an apartment with two units. And so each unit is considered point eight ERUs. And so point eight times two is one point six equivalent residential units. And so on the sewer side, we take that equivalent residential unit calculation for each property, and we multiply that times the base rate that twenty, twenty dollars, twenty-one dollars a a month. And then we add the usage rate to it. And so the water system isn't done like that. They consider all parcels, one ERU or one base rate. And we talked about that with sewer and water and, and I think city staff felt it would be fair to, inequitable to follow the sewer protocol that we'd kind of established. And so, you know, mostly businesses and multifamily units would be charged the base rate times the equivalent residential units plus the usage, if that makes sense. So I think the motion is really, do you want to have the water be charged calculation using to follow the sewer be charged calculation using equivalent residential units, or do you want to leave it as is? That make sense?
It's just making them both equal based on ERUs.
Right, and it affects probably two dozen properties in town, mostly businesses, so people's service or people's cooperative energy, utilities, places like that.
So explain it again, how ERU works for the sewer?
So equivalent residential unit for water for non-residential properties, so for example Casey's. You take their water usage over a month, and you divide that by five thousand gallons per month. Okay, and so if they're over five thousand gallons, it's that fraction. So for example, if they they have ten, ten thousand gallons, they are considered two ERUs. If they would have three thousand or fifteen thousand gallons in a month, they would be three ERUs, sorry. Ten thousand would be two ERUs.
Their residential units, about five thousand a month, max.
Yeah, and that's pretty, pretty conservative. Most people are actually less than that. And so then you take that ERU calculation times the base rate for the sewer. There's a monthly base rate, and then to that base rate, you add the actual sewer usage on a thousand, you know, so many, so many dollars per thousand gallons. And so the motion would be just to have the water system mimic that calculation methodology for the water system. So the sewer calculation and the water's calculation for the billing rate based on ERUs and water usage would be the same.
So you're saying right now the sewer isn't equal to the water, the way they're, the way it's being billed?
That is correct.
So what is, so on the average, five thousand gallon ERU for the water is X. What is that compared to on the sewer? For five thousand gallons on the sewer, because you're going to use, you're going to use the same the same math to figure out the
Well, the rate, the rate structures are a little different, right? But the number of the number times the base rate is different. So for example, let's take people's energy co-op. I don't know how many ERUs they are, probably like two and a half. So their sewer bill is two point five times the base rate, let's say it's twenty dollars, plus their usage, that's their sewer rate. So on the water system, right now, it's the base rate times one plus their usage.
For further discussion, I make a motion, we approve using the same process or for both the sewer and the water ERUs for billing. Multiple ERUs for the billing.
Is this going to raise the water bills for those places?
It will.
Sewer bills?
No, not the sewer, just the water. It will raise their water, you know, for example, people's service or people's energy, instead of the one times the twenty-one or twenty-two or twenty-three dollars, it would be two and a half times, for example. So
So this is just on businesses?
Essentially, or multifamily housing. So if you, if like an apartment complex of two or three or four units, their calculation will be the same. It's point eight ERU per unit. And so, you know, there's three units, it's two point four ERU.
So can we get a second to our motion?
I'll say.
You're right, it's, it's intended to be used for the higher use of water users to make them equal to the sewer rate that they're being charged, so it's a if it's, it's shorting we're getting the income on the sewer side, we will, because of the ERUs to fund the plan. At the same time, the water, what we're posing here is that the water areas would be the same as the sewer. So it's the businesses, it's the people that use a lot of water, it's the people that use irrigation for their homes.
But not residents, not
No, not residents.
Residents is just a one ERU. But businesses and multifamily would be impacted by this policy. And that's it, it's a couple dozen properties? Roughly.
Non-residentials.
Non-residential. Non-single-family residential, in fact.
Any other comments? I sing that, all those in favor, motion, signify by saying aye.
Okay.
O's?
No.
Alls no?
Yep.
Okay, planning and zoning. You have a memo from Phil regarding Erv and Phil, I see your own. Well, let's first of all, let's let's make a motion, I make a motion, we approve resolution twenty twenty-four dash twenty-three. Which, I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, no, that's, I'm sorry. We should talk about Erv's memo in your packet. Regarding Erv and Phil, do you want to speak to that?
Yeah, I, yeah, hi, I'm Will Hutchins, I work with Phil out of our Mandan, North Dakota office, actually. But, um, yeah, we, we just wanted to note that there were three conditions that were necessitating the need for that variance. And, you know, Erv did his due diligence, and after discussing and looking at his options, was able to meet the setbacks, meet the use, and then provided a drawing this afternoon, I believe it was this afternoon to Phil that clearly met the architectural design standards by adding another door and I think another window, as well as a rock facade panel on the bottom. So at this time, we have no concerns and feel that the variance is no longer needed because all the conditions of the zoning ordinance are being met as is. Can I ask any questions you might have? I'll try to anyways, I'm not Phil, so.
Alright, sorry about that. Well, there's a, there's no, it's just that it's like I said, Erv stepped up and taking care of the necessary issues to take care of the front of the building to meet the ACC guidelines, so.
Yeah, that's good.
Yeah, no action, no action needed by the council tonight, so.
It says we went through everything, if there was a planning and zoning and all the different variations, and I think this was the simplest way to do it without having a variance to be able to do it. So thank you, Erv, for coming up with that.
I guess the only question I have is where is it now?
Well then, we just, we'll give a permit.
It's been turned into CMS, so they should be starting on it.
The CMS is drawing up the permit, you say? So you say CMS is drawing up the permit?
Well, he, I sent in all the drawings that he did, and I put in the notes so that CMS knows that there is no issue, and they can go ahead and issue it, so.
Thanks.
Alright. Next item is a sign variance.
Yeah, let me get situated here, I'm trying to find the share button real quick, I'm not used to the Zoom platform. Two, 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 more? No, oh, there, it's right in the middle, okay. Oh, it looks like it's disabled, okay, that's fine, I can run through this without needing the exhibitors, only some maps showing where things are at. So this is a variance request for a particular sign at the Two Sisters Restaurant. And that property located at I can't get the right one, I got the Hamilton one up, and I don't want to start on that one yet, that's for sure. Let's see here. Let's see one, sorry guys, I have between windows open, apologize. There. Actually, I just don't have it open, that's why. Here, I got it in the council packet, we'll go this way, okay. So, um, this was a sign, a, a package of different signs that was submitted for this new restaurant use in, in Orinoco there. The other signs, there was two wall signs, and there is also a directional sign that's going to be ground-mounted. Basically, the purpose of that is inside the lodges, kind of direct people as where to go. And in some senses, you can look at this next sign as also a form of a directional signage, to some extent, except for it doesn't meet the definition as clearly defined in the ordinance that stands today. So essentially, what they have here is by definition standards, a projecting sign. They called it a blade sign in the application, but when you're looking at the definition as outlined in the zoning, this would clearly meet the definition for a projecting sign, which we just thought was going to fall underneath all of the other standards for a non, a non-specified type of sign. So we had done our initial calculation So we had done our initial calculations, thought, you know what, sure, this is underneath the minimum size, should be able to move forward with this one, no problem. But then it came to our attention a little bit later that nestled deep inside the, um, the historic, uh, zoning district area, there is a provision that basically says, uh, projecting signs are not permitted in any other district. And so you wouldn't think to look there unless you actually go looking in that other district to find that, in fact, uh, projecting signs are not permitted. Um, so, you know, we took a look back, there was also something in the actual, um, the B two district that says something about projecting signs not being allowed under canopy. So it's made you believe that they're allowed, just not underneath canopies. So one way of getting around, uh, to the point here is that essentially, um, a variance is needed for them to be able to put up the sign, it's gonna go above the doorway area, just to kinda do mark where they would enter. Um, staff reviewed this, you know, it's not gonna have any impact on traffic, it's not gonna be seen from neighboring residential properties. It's really a minimal amount of signage overall, and like I said, it's more for directional purposes. So we actually are inclined to support this variance request and, and recommend the approval to the Planning and Zoning Commission for a recommendation to, to the council here this evening, excuse me. And so, um, and it's just one thing we would note too, as you, you're working on your ordinance, be right, that there was some conflicting and, and maybe, um, uh, different ways that this could be interpreted, and so I just encourage you guys, as you're working on that too, um, make sure that that, uh, gets buttoned up and, you know, traditionally, but projecting signs are, are pretty common in all parts of the community. They're not usually considered a nuisance sign. So, um, with that, I can answer any questions you may have. I don't believe there's anyone who spoke at the public hearing for or against this, their applicant and, uh, their representative was there though to answer questions.
Very good, thank you.
Great, we'd like to. I'll make a motion to approve, um, the sign that there is for Two Sisters.
I'll second.
Any other comments? Seeing none, would you do a voice vote?
Uh, approved.
Councillor Richards?
Approved.
Councillor Penner, guys?
Yes.
Councillor Toad? The mayor, of course.
Aye. That's approved, very good. The next item is a, um, is a, uh, a memo, um, regarding the Hamilton Group. And I can read that to the group, uh, give us an update where we're at in the process. The Hamilton Group has proposed to Cedar Crest Point Residential Project applied for preliminary flat rezoning and variances. Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing on June thirteenth, which they, they left open to their July eleventh meetings. City engineer, city planner reviewed the plans in advance of the June thirteenth P and Z meetings, but not before notices had gone out for that public hearing. Engineer and planner determined the plans were incomplete for review and the applicants were working on revised plans, but there may be other issues with the property and the requests that would involve further modifications to the plans. This item will be placed on a future agenda when there is a full information to consider. We understand that residents are eager to learn about the project, but at this point, we don't have enough information to consider on exactly what the project will consist of and what actions the city needs to take. Uh, thank you, we appreciate your patience. The council will take no action on this item tonight, it is informational only. Well, that's, thank you everybody who was there, but that's kind of the summary for the records of what's happened so far. And we'll continue that on, at the July P and Z meeting and, and, uh, the plan to be for Standec Funding Services, Will or, or Phil to come back with their recommendation at that time.
Yeah, we'll, we'll be back and then I know that there was a reach out this afternoon to, to talk with the Hamilton Group and get this, uh, going as quick as possible, knowing that the clock is ticking and we wanna help them, uh, make sure that, uh, they have a chance to meet that sixty day, um, as well as that we have enough time to do the review, because this is a big request, there's a lot, a lot of moving parts here. So making sure we're doing our due diligence as we move forward.
Alright, very good.
I'll say, it, it was a great meeting. For those who didn't attend, I think, I think everybody was there. I think it's a good meeting, I think the common thread was allow them time to, allow the citizens time to take a look and understand what's happening.
There are also a lot of letters too that were written to the, to the city as well, I think twenty-seven letters were, were with the city. I know that there were, I think, twenty-eight on Zoom as well, if I understand that number right. Plus the full house that we had here, so it was, it was well attended.
Lot of good comments afterwards, too.
Alright.
Yeah, we, and we took, we took note of all those as well as, uh, we'll be, um, providing our staff report too, uh, if it comes forward with, you know, in, information that can answer some of the questions the public had as well. Thank you.
Next item was regarding a request from the last monthly meeting about re-early access with I-WORK, which is our, our building permit software package. And, uh, I think that was something that staff looked at and, uh, any other comments, did you hear your comments with? P and Z about how well it's, is, will it work out or any thoughts or you wanna? Wait for Jason to comment, unless anybody else has any comments right now, we can.
I'd like to actually put it up for a vote, so at least the council's behind us doing that. Um, I think that this would, uh, uh, correct a lot of, um, comments that there were for, uh, uh, keeping things a little bit quiet, so it'd be non-disclosure for that to open up with, with what we wanna have. So I think it'd just give us access to know what's going on with the permits and it's public knowledge anyway, whoever pulls the permit.
So, Ryland, I did look at the data, the data, the data classification of the permits. I didn't actually know that, nobody's ever asked, but it is public data. Um, you could, depending on what the permit, which means that it's accessible to anybody in the public. It's, it's not protected, including this council members could, could, are included in that. There could be some non-public data in a particular permit, just be aware of that. And, and I found a couple of examples, one from Minitrista, the city of Minitrista, and they have actually applicants, building permit applicants sign a form that says, um, they're acknowledging that the data is public and that if they have any trade secret or security data, which are the two classes of data likely to be not public, that they should identify those when they submit the permit. And then if they don't identify them, then they're gonna presume that the information in their permit is not trade secret data. That, that would be like Dollar General, um, submitting a permit.
Yeah, that's.
Um, application and maybe they have some sort of proprietary something or other that they use in all the Dollar Generals. If they wanna claim that as trade secret data, they would have to identify it. I don't think you need to do that to, tonight, but that's a long way of saying, I think it's fine to give everybody access to it, because, um, yeah, go ahead.
So do we need to put something, we need to modify our building permit with that yes or pay to? Yes or no, you don't want that information available?
I've actually never seen that, but it's not a bad idea, I think.
It just, it protects those people.
Right.
For example, when the data center came in, that was extremely secure and that was very well.
That's a good example, that, it's rare, but that does, stuff does happen, or you have, uh, you know, when they were building the, like the windmills and wind farms and things like that, there are certain things that they don't want, that have to be in the permit application, but they don't want, that could be classified as trade secret data under the statute, so, or security data, I think that would qual- qualify as your other one. I mean, those are very narrow exceptions that would be non-public data. And then the, the council, neither the council nor the public would be have, have access to that data. So is, is, but that's rare, I mean, I think ninety-nine percent of the time, it's not, it's gonna be public, but Will wants to say something too.
Yeah, uh, if I get mayor, council, I actually, I, I worked at a municipal government for, uh, nine years before I joined the Standec team. We, we, we tracked from one, uh, type of system where it was, uh, sending things around via email and reviews getting missed and deadlines not quite always on, on track, so I, I applaud you for making this move. Um, yeah, there are times when things are submitted, you know, federal government, a lot of times will have something related to security issues that they will have to hold back. Um, we actually did not make our permits payable, um, just when you think about like knowing where the gas line comes into the building, if you wanted to be a terrorist and things like that, and you, you have all that information right at your, 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 um, fingertips, if you, if you wanted to be nefarious, um, as well as, um, uh, what was I just gonna say? The, um, uh, oh, knowing like the, the security systems in the banks, things like that, like where is the vault for the, you know, the, the jewels hid? So just some considerations for you, but usually, I know in our system, we were able to lock down the permits, but open up the like plats and zoning changes and those other things you might wanna be able to keep over into the public, so they have a track, the chance to track as you move forward, so, thanks, thanks for letting me weigh in.
Yeah, no, everyone, I don't, we're not looking to go into blueprints on, on any buildings or anything else that way, that's not what it is. Just, just the permits, so we know what permits are issued and when they're issued, that's, that's the main.
That should be fine, yep, yep.
See, there'd be like a modified view that only shows just.
Yeah, well, I mean, we're not even looking for, for the print off of that, we're just looking for the permit, okay? To know what the permit that's on it, that's, that's.
The application?
Yeah, yeah, to understand.
Yeah, I mean, we're not, we're, no, we're not gonna go in anything, any, any deeper than that, so.
There's no reason, there's no reason for any bigger detail than that, I wouldn't.
No, I mean, that's.
And some of that stuff just be redacted if this.
Yeah, but I'm just saying, we're not asking to do that and that's normally not on that page anyway, so, you know, it wouldn't show any of that detail.
Yeah, so this program will just have the.
Yeah, that's all.
And then if somebody makes a data request for the other blueprints or whatever, or, or building plans, then somebody, Renee or.
Well, I mean, I, I.
You would have to review them and they, they would probably get access to them unless there's some other. Public data in there, which there might be, but correct me if, if I'm wrong.
Aren't you, you're a, the way I understood from the last meeting, you were just asking for council and planning and zoning access, not, not public?
Yeah, so ju- just that, and then I've come in here and, and asked Renee if I could, you know, take a folder and take a look at it for the, the prints and, you know, everything stays in here, nothing leaves, and, and so it's just taking a look at what that folder is. And one of them was in the, uh, storage unit, looking at what they had put down and, you know, their changes that they were doing as they were moving along. But that's a one-on-one type situation, which is different, so.
I think it's fine, I, overall, I just think it's fine, if you wanna do that, it's fine.
My concern is just a matter of the public knowing that, that council and publics, people outside of city staff are seeing the permit. And, you know, I don't understand what's different than six pages of permits from the first of the year.
Well.
Looking at this versus looking at it, and I don't know how it was gonna look at it, I mean. Because if you look at the sheet that she's looking at making available for you, it, there's a lot of, lot of detail in that line item. I don't know if you've had a chance to look at that.
Well, it's, it's, the one thing that there is, is, is again, it's, this is great to get the report and, and this report is much better than we've gotten for many months before. And, you know, I mean, usually you'd only get a couple lines, two or three, or the last, uh, month ago for planning and zoning.
Okay, that's not, we don't need to talk about that reporting.
Oh, but anyway, what I'm saying, I'm explaining why it's important to do that. And for us to have the knowledge of what's going on on a day-to-day basis, I think it's very important to set up a re- a review that comes, you know, six weeks later when we have a, a monthly meeting of what, what there was, so.
So did you make a motion?
Yeah, I made the motion to be able to put that up for a vote, to have that.
I'll second it.
Can you watch this review, go online?
For us just to have the access to do that, um.
So it's basically so that planning and zoning knows when something's getting started. Or perhaps, well, much time to get something done.
No, that's, that's not the purpose of it. Purpose, purpose is only information, it's not an action item for P and Z or council to take.
Right, it's just transparency.
It's just, the guy down the street wants to put a roof on.
We know what's going on.
Yeah, but it's, it's not an action item comes from it, if it does, then we then we abuse the system, yeah.
So somebody goes, hey, who's digging that hole over there?
Right, and you can look and see, yeah.
It's a Dollar General zone, it's.
I mean, somebody's building the building.
I think we need to make it clear to people going forward, if this is approved, that we tell the public that the permit is gonna be available to council and P and Z to see.
That's right, well, I think that's.
We don't, and all of a sudden, they start, a council member abuses it and starts looking at it or questions the person, says, how did you hear about it?
Well, let me, let me put it another way, just because you're on the city council doesn't mean you can access non-public data that's possessed by the city. And so what I'm saying is, US council members, like somebody, you know, whatever, whatever non-public data we might have at the city, you can, council members can access that data if it's non-public, if they reasonably require access for their duties, which they might. I mean, council very well might require access on an individual basis. So that was my concern, if there's non-public data in there, you can't just give it to council when, like you say, they're not even voting on it and it's not really part of their job duties. So my research was, well, is it public data anyway? So if it's public data anyway, then council member X, council member Paul could just go request it and it would be accessible to him. And so because it's public data anyway, it doesn't really matter, you know, even though it's not necessary for your jobs as council people, I don't see any reason if it's public data, why we couldn't do it.
Well, a resident could even request it.
Correct, yeah, yep, you're no different than a resident, that's what I was, yeah, you're no different than a resident.
I've seen it, um, as a summary report at the end of P and Z packets a lot too, like just all the building permits that were issued in a table all the way down and that kinda gets you an opportunity to keep an eye on what's happening, but not necessarily be, uh, any more in the know than anyone else who can see the packet.
Yeah, I just feel like the data that we get in our packet is essentially the same thing that you're seeing, maybe it's two weeks late or something like that and seeing it, but that's the same data and you're gonna be looking at them.
Right, and so I guess you're saying that the council would have a better access, quicker access than the general, general John Q. Public who would have to go in and fill out a data request. And I guess that's, that is the difference, they both have equal access under the law, but one gets it like that and one has to.
Yeah.
Work for it, I guess, or, so that's, if that's an issue, that's an issue, but I don't, yeah.
Okay, uh, any other comments? Uh, seeing none, all's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
O's, aye? Our department, we have a couple, um, we have approval for one applicant, Wendell.
When?
When, yes. I mean, I can make a motion.
I'm gonna make a motion, I'll second it.
All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. O's, approved. The first responders, they had, um, is the item we added, they had three in the city halls and, uh, ten in the township, month of May. When and Caleb, I make a motion, we approve, or approve their, as a first responder.
I'll second.
Comments? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
There's a memo in your packet regarding, uh, the wild ones. Katie and Dawn. There's Katie, hi Katie.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Awesome.
Okay, so we're just starting at the discussion about the memo that you provided. Um, would you wanna speak to that with the wild ones?
Sure, so you can see that there's a small sign, I wonder if it's two feet by three feet? And they were just hoping to be able to place that near the community center, um, to just signify how they helped us get those, uh, native plantings put in the ground there.
Would there be like a, a couple of them, or how many do you think are gonna put around the building or where's they're at?
I think just one.
Okay, good.
The community center is the only place where you're planting these?
Correct. At this time, anyway, I'm sure they wouldn't mind helping us get more native planting somewhere else, but.
I see this as a temporary sign, I was kinda expecting it to be a permanent sign.
I see this is a temporary sign. I was kind of expecting it to be a permanent sign.
I think it could be. I, I guess I look at it as it could be someone different every year that, that donates. Cause I, this is a donation sign, right Katie?
Yeah.
Correct.
But this is their, their, you know, we're.
One year.
Yeah, it's a one-year thing and we're, we're, uh, you know.
I think it's a great idea to do that. Absolutely, yeah.
Recognition, recognition.
Absolutely. I think that's such a, you know.
Is he correct? This was the six hundred dollar donation towards the project? Is that correct?
I believe it was five hundred.
Five hundred, okay. Okay, so.
I make a motion to approve the, the sign.
I'll second it.
Are these all perennials? These plants?
Yes. Yes.
That's good. Sounds good. Any other comments? They've been working with Kane too, I believe, for employees. So. Um, any other comments? Seeing none, all those in favor? Sign if I was saying aye.
Aye.
O's? Same sign? Approved. Thank you Katie. Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. And then you guys, for the next thing, did that already get crossed off for July?
We removed it off the agenda.
What, what's that?
We removed it from the agenda.
Okay, perfect. So we can do that again in July. Thank you.
You're welcome. Next item is a, uh, request for close the office on the four hours on Friday, July the fifth. Well, July fourth is on a Thursday and Friday is, it's a slow day anyway. And so the request is to, um, close the office on the fifth. I'll make a motion. We approve the closing on July fifth.
I'll second it.
Is that what I do?
I've got a question. So.
Yeah.
If we do approve this, it, I'm assuming the PTO comes out of their PTO bucket. It's not additional PTO.
I would assume it would be.
What do you want to do it?
I think that makes sense to take it out of PTO.
Yeah.
You know, that way that's, that's.
I, I see as PTO kind of the four hours, but.
Four hours.
You're a staff person too. Would you agree with that?
I think you should be able to use E S S T, comp or PTO, any of them. They're.
That's true.
They're your, they're at your disposal. So I wouldn't limit it to just.
Whatever that you've got on there, yeah.
It just comes out of your bucket and it's not, it's not a given.
Any other comments? Seeing none, all those in favor? Sign if I was saying aye.
Aye.
O's? Throughed. That side was a, uh, we have a res- resolution twenty twenty-four dash twenty-two, which turned out to be a, a duplicate of a earlier motion, a resolution twenty twenty-four dash sixteen. So this one just corrects the record and, um, makes the twenty twenty-four. Twenty twenty-four sixteen, what was it for? Uh, that was for the public safety aid.
Oh.
Oversight and we have a pretty good one again. Did you make a motion for it then? Yes, please. I'll second it. All seconds it. Any other comments? Uh, voice vote?
Mayor Ecorst?
Aye.
Council Phillips?
Aye.
Council Pennergus?
Aye.
Council Richards?
Aye.
And Council Delamina?
Aye.
That's approved. Thank you. This item was a temporary liquor license with the Lions Club.
I made the motion to approve the liquor license, the liquor license.
I'll second. Any other comments regarding? We haven't seen, oh, the fire relief also.
Yeah, you got a couple of.
We have to prove at the same time.
I think we should do them separate because they're separate in here, wasn't together.
Well, yeah, yeah, we have separate, out of the motions, they actually are excluded, both of them. Again, there's a reach through, they're separate ones. That's fine on.
Um, and they're both negative. I think both will be approved. So. Are they separate or?
Well, maybe they're first, I'd keep them together.
Okay. Make a motion for both of those, not just, uh, for Lions, but, um, also for, uh, Fire Department. Fire relief, actually.
I'll second it. No, we had Jim second, or Jim Richard second at the beginning.
Yeah, I just had Sid Lions and so I, I inserted the other one in there. So they're both in there.
Okay, so Paul is doing. I take back my second second. Hold on just a second. Okay. Any other comments for those temporary licenses? Seeing none, all those in favor? Sign if I was saying aye.
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 Vote? Consent agenda? Motion, we approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Comments? Seeing none, all those in favor? Sign if I was saying aye.
Aye.
I make a motion, the meeting adjourned.
Second.
You guys have been twenty-eight? All in favor? Sign if I was saying aye.
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 O's? You need adjourned, so.
Nice record, man.
Sit down now or.
That was a nice record right ahead.
Am I dreaming? Hey, word, word state, aye.